We'll have a parent rep or two, a school board rep or two. All of this will be latter part of October, early part of November as we establish it. And we can talk about it in Personnel Negotiations Committee as well in terms of process. I would hope the position would be posted November one-ish or early November. And the hope that I communicated to the Idlehurst faculty and staff was that we'd hopefully have the position filled and somebody ready to go, contract signed, ready to start July 1, maybe as early as January, maybe no later than March. Let's see how it goes. We're going to be out in front of things. And both our Assistant Superintendent Crosby and I have had conversations with educators in the area and in the region who would be pretty excited about the opportunity to come here. We might have some good internal candidates as well. And we will do the process exactly the way a position like this should be done. Open, transparent, involved, clear, good communication, consider all candidates, and do it the right way. And I will lead that process. Couple other quick things. Any questions on that one? I wanted to quickly thank our educational colleagues in Dover. Aside from joining us with Oyster River and the two lawsuits that had a significant impact on the state, and aside from being part of this seat, Career Technical Education Tri-City Agreement with Rochester, that's a wonderful thing for our kids, and all kinds of the Mental Health Alliance and other ways that we're all kind of working together. Peter Driscoll, the high school principal there coordinated, but we had three individuals from Dover give us about an hour and a half, two hours of their time, a couple of weeks ago for the joint Fields Committee that were kind of pursuing ways we could look at doing something different in front of the middle school and the high school. Community space, athletic space, not a regulation track course, but maybe track elements. They are in the midst of a much bigger project over there. Our scale would probably be a budget of about a third of that, but they were just incredible. School Board Member Brown was there as well. Gave us everything, access to things. Here's every document you could ever want. This is our strategy. This is what we learned. Keep us posted. We'll be involved. It's just great to have that collegiality. I was going to mention the Festival Association because I know it was coming, but I didn't know they were going to be here tonight, so that's already done. And the last thing I will mention is the I-Ready Assessment, which you've heard about two, three, four times now, which is our gold standard, externally provided, valid, reliable, normed assessment measure that we will use moving forward for reading, writing, and math in this district, replacing NWEA. This is the central exam. We're beginning our, wrapping up our first testing window. And our school leaders just had a really powerful hour and a half conversation today led by our Assistant Superintendent around teaching and learning and where we are. We need to do better. And I think I reminded them that we have those four key domains that we are rolling out. Attendance or presence, culture and climate that we're going to measure in various ways, learning, which is going to be the I-Ready Assessments at the top of the list, and graduation and matriculation. Those four domains that are the key ways we're going to measure our progress on all this will probably be rolling out in the middle of this year. We've got to get data systems in place. And I know in the past, my understanding, in the past X number of years, you've gotten bits and pieces of information here and there, but we want to say this is what's most important and we want it out there and reliable and clear to everybody. I want to be, Boston Sunday Globe did a magazine cover story this weekend that was titled, "Public Schools Are Failing in New England and It Doesn't Seem Anybody Cares," I think was the headline. There's data post-COVID just across the country that reading, writing, math scores, and chronic absenteeism and student anxiety and depression are at levels of tremendous concern. And we have students finding great success in our schools and in schools throughout New England. But I think we need to, probably by the middle of this school year, have a really good, solid look at where this district is. And it's going to be apples to oranges because we're going to, to say, here's where we are right now, but where were we last year, three years ago, five years ago, given we now have a standard template for moving forward and a test. We'll do that apples-to-oranges bit because it'd be good sense to see where we are. But I think we really need to look hard at all of that data as we've kind of got this in place and we've been working on this since. And aspects of it are going to require us to work harder and think more creatively about what we're doing. But just a heads up that that's coming. Sorry about the length there.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions? I think my, with the last point of I-Ready and kind of our pillars of what we, what we track in the data, I would just encourage student voice to be a part of that. Current students, recent alums, whoever. I think their insight onto what it is is just so valuable. And I think giving students agency to be a part of the process is just important if it's going to have a strong foundation to grow and to be really adopted. I just encourage student voice to be a part of.
Just a reminder, the culture and climate piece is all going to be, aside from discipline data and PBI stuff, is going to be survey data and largely student survey data, faculty and staff. And we're looking at either two times a year or three times a year, not too intrusive, so it's not a half hour kind of thing, but quick. So that's huge. And just a reminder, too, that this has been in the four key domains document for close to a year now. The key measure for graduation and matriculation is families and students graduating self-reporting that I have a plan and I am satisfied with it, which sounds kind of wishy-washy, like isn't about everybody going to four-year colleges? No, it's not about everybody going to four-year colleges. That data is pretty significant. And parents and graduating seniors generally answer that question pretty honestly, especially when it's framed correctly. Do you have a plan and are you happy with it? And hear the same thing from your parents and guardians. That's, and we'll still provide all the data, percentage of students going here, percentage of students going there, but that's kind of the key best measure at the top of the list. And that's all student voice.
And when would that be asked, just out of like timeline? Because as I put my parent hat on, what, when would that kind of question, would it be towards last, their final year in school or?
The last question has to be when they know what their plans are or as those plans develop. And we don't want to be slippery to ask on a pep rally day or some other day where they're very good about everything. We want to make sure it's solid. We also have on our wish list that it'd be nice to have at least one data point a year or two out. And every school district wishes they had this and it proves impossible. So just the point being, we're not going to wait for students to graduate because it's really, really hard to get data back once students are out the door. I'd like to make this, you know, checkout requirement. You've got to return your, you've got to return this, you've got to return that, and you've got to complete this survey is really important. But ideally, we'd have a data point a year or two out where all students in some form or another are reporting that they're still enrolled in the two-year college, they're still enrolled in the four-year college, they're finding success, because students that go on to school and then drop a year or two later is a good indicator that we got something wrong at the beginning.
Or how much they're making in the trades and what they're.
Or that they're really happy, yeah, that they made the choice not to inquire any school debt.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Yep, okay, moving on to our committee updates. I believe we only have a policy update. Board Member Brown, I don't think there's anything else. Yeah?
I have an update.
Okay.
Do I have the floor?
You do.
Okay. Just a little bit of a background because we do have our scout badge, Democracy Badge attendees in the audience. I just want to give a little background that policies are our board rules and the school district rules. Similar to how the New Hampshire Legislature adopts laws, you have to go through a first reading and second reading. So if you were to look at our agenda tonight, you will see that we will have some policies, i.e. rules, that will be up for second reading because we read them and first reading a month ago. And we have new ones that are coming up for first reading. So I just wanted to at least give that background to our scouts. Our minutes from our last meeting are at page 10 of our packet. It is great to have our policies vetted by the school administrators and board members so that we can get perspective from the school administrators that are, you know, also dealing with these policies. Kat is invaluable, I will say that again, at helping us go through these policies. And what you will see in first reading is we went through a couple. Now, the last time we reviewed Policy BBAA and BBBC was in 2010. So it, or I'm sorry, it was approved in 2011. So it's been a while. So Kat has been helping us go through stale policies, to the extent policies have been changed and required by law. She has helped us get that language included into our policies. So you will see them as track change in our packet. So I can speak to the policies when we get to first reading, but I just wanted to give that background that that's how we're charging through. You'll see a lot of policies because there's an awful long to-do list for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our presentation for the high school report is postponed to our next meeting, October 28th. So our policy adoptions this evening, we have three reading evenings, readings. Second, for second reading, we have the New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights, Summer Activities and Instructional Resources and Instructional Resources Plan. These are for vote. Can I first have a motion to read them by title only so we don't, we're not here for two hours?
I make a motion to read these policies by title only.
Okay, second.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Board Member Brown, please.
Okay, the first policy for second reading is AB. The title is New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights.
All right, looking for a motion to adopt this?
I motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, wonderful. Any discussion? This is required by law, I believe. Yep. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next one?
The next policy for second reading is Policy IHCA, Summer Activities. If you need to see this, this is page 32 of our packet.
Yep, motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you.
The last bill, or last bill, sorry. Last policy for second reading appearing at page 34 of your packet is IJ, Instructional Resources and Instructional Resources Plan.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, those are the ones, these are active policies. And then our, to our first readings, can I have another motion to read these five policies by title only, please?
I motion to read these five policies by title only.
Second.
Second, wonderful. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll just go one by one by first read.
Yeah. The first policy for first reading is Policy BBAA, School Board Member Authority. Can we just keep going?
Yes, please, thanks.
For second, for first reading, the second policy is BBBC, Board Member or District Officer Resignation. The next policy is IHBI, Alternative Learning Programs and Individual Plans. The next policy is IKB, Homework. And the last policy is JCA, Change of Class or School Assignment, Best Interest and Manifest.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, for our unfinished business this evening, we have 8.1, our Proposed Hilltopper Promise, and I'll pass it over to the Superintendent. We did all for second and first. You're up.
Perfect. I'll leave it up to the board chair and the board to let me know how you want to proceed. I went through all this pretty carefully last go-around. It's kind of been a process that began last summer and kind of wrapped up in June at the school level, brought it to the school board retreat, and I believe that was in July, shared it in the form that it is now with the entire district about three weeks ago, ahead of it going to the school board for first read or as new business, I apologize. And the feedback, I've gotten a lot over the course of the last 15 months. I think folks haven't been bashful about expressing to me things they weren't happy with or didn't like, and they feel comfortable doing that. But in the, my limited perspective, I said, if you have any last thoughts or reservations, reach out to your school leaders or to me directly, or anybody to Kat or Katie at the central office. And I think I've heard maybe 10 or 15 folks who said, I love this, this is perfect, I'm very excited about it, and I haven't gotten any additional last-minute feedback otherwise. So that's where we are, and I'm happy to explain any parts of it or revisit any parts of it with the folks.
Think of just the process of this. I think that the, where to kind of house this officially in our kind of mission, vision statement, which is a policy, I think it's completely in order to have this as a, to be voted on or adopted by the board this evening. But just kind of where it kind of sits and lays in codification, I think it's good for this, right, as it is, and then kind of how to meld this and intertwine into our policies, I think is our next step in the As and Bs of our policy, but no, you know, priority, mid-priority to be able to look at that in the policy committee. So I'm looking for a simple motion to adopt the Hilltopper Promise, which is our mission and value statement, just for a definition of what it is. Value statement as presented, okay. Do I have a second? Okay, great. Any discussion? All right. Oh, yep.
I just want to say, I've heard great feedback from the people, too. I did mention it to people in the public, what they thought of it, and they all love, the kids love it, they love, you know, the Hilltopper Promise and what it stands for. So I'm very excited to see this come through.
Yes. A comment also, all the people that participated in this discussion, I want to thank their, donating their time to this.
And I think that just the request of having this kind of be, again, across, I don't want to say marketed, but kind of platformed across our abilities in, either in, not in posters, but in, or something to be able to kind of see this in maybe a handbook, but kind of have this be central to being able to be understood rather than filed away. I don't think it will be, but just a request to have it be really public, publicly accessible. All right. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, wonderful. Of course, yep.
Important reminder, and I've said it again and again, but just for folks that are watching. So this is document number one, the, what we're about and what we're trying to do. Document number two is effectively done as well. That's like, okay, if this is what we're about and what we're trying to do, how do, how we hold ourselves accountable? And that's the presence, culture, and climate, learning, matriculation. We're fleshing out the details and the data systems for that. The data systems will continue to be messy for a little while, but I would imagine mid-school year, we'll be ready to kind of, you've already seen the one pager, and this is what we're doing, but by mid-school year, I think we'll be ready to start saying, okay, this is what this is going to look like, how's it going to show up on the website, integrated into the superintendent forums, a dashboard of sorts that the school board, city council, or anybody in the community can kind of look at and measure is really important. The third key document is like, okay, this is what we're about, this is how we measure it. How are we going to get there? That's the beginnings of, okay, strategic priorities. And some of those trains have already left the station. We knew we needed better tech infrastructure. We knew we needed a better central assessment system, I-Ready. So we've been moving on some of those things already, but that will be the primary work of the program committee over the next several months. And we'll kind of bring our rough draft. There's sort of, the board's been fully involved. Oh, by the way, some of these things are already happening, and everybody's nodded and agreed, and they were pretty, they were no brainers in terms of just, let's not wait till the whole plan comes together. And that hopefully will be together before the next budget season so we can start actually tying it into strategic budgeting and strategic planning. So that, those are the three things that go together.
Appreciate that. That's a good clarity of holistic vision. Just as we have students here and we're at, we're towards the end of our meeting, we don't have much more other than our upcoming meeting schedule, and we're kind of speaking about this, like what we want our schools to be, I'll just like, what do we want our schools to be, how do we learn, all those things? If the Girl Scouts could come up and say, without objection from the board, I'm asking just what makes you happy to go to school, what do you like about school, or anything like that to kind of help us, like, think about how we decide things? That's what I kind of do. I ask people what they like, what they don't like, and what their vision is. But really, the easier one is what you, do you like about school? Or what is like your perfect, like, what brings you happiness? What brings you joy? What like, what do you like about school? What do you need more of? Or something like that in general, if you want to think about that, or you can really say whatever you'd like and come up to the microphone because it's a democracy and we can listen to you. Yes, currently, just, yeah. Is this all right? Yep. Yeah. Just six or seven things you can say. Yeah, thank you, welcome. Whatever you think. Yeah, it's. Do you want to hear the question again? Let's just be simple, like, what, what do you look forward to at school? What do you like about school? Yeah. You can say any. What do you like about school?
I like doing chorus.
Chorus.
The arts.
The arts, yep.
I like field trips.
Field trips? Have you been on a field trip yet?
Only one.
Where did you go?
Uh, we went, oh, we went on a hike and then we got ice cream.
I think our superintendent would like to promote more of that, so. Mr. Shea, you just write and say more field trips and potentially more ice cream. Let's do that one. That'll be an easy one. Maddie, hi. Put the microphone down. Yeah, you, you grab, you can grab it and pull it towards you. There you go.
I like walking in at the beginning of the day and listening to music that has already been playing for a while.
Say more. Who's playing the music? Is it on the speakers? Is it Ms. Posse?
It's like the teachers that are playing the music. It gives me a positive attitude every day.
That just filled my bucket more than.
And wakes me up.
And wakes you up. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Well, you know how to reach out to us. We're like accessible. If we, if you ever have an idea about anything about school, we want to hear you. Yes, Board Member.
It strikes me that a lot of those things are about community and like being together. You know, chorus and music and the way we start our day and the field trips and the fun and, you know, that, that school is more than just, it is the rigor, but it's also the way we, we connect to each other. So I like, I like those answers.
I got two, yeah. School Board Representative Puckren?
I feel like overall, it's like the importance of positive reinforcement, like with field trips and things like that, but also like community-related, like self-expression is very important. And once you get to your later years, it's like a lot harder to find that kind of thing with such a set schedule and everything. And I'm really hoping that you guys are able to like bring that attitude into high school and everything and being able to express yourself still and still have those clubs that really make you happy.
And I don't want to read, I think that's what we're aiming for. I think that, and I think from my perspective, and I don't see, is that that's what it is more. And I think we have work to do to be able to create a space, a community that you want to go to school, you want to show up, it feels yours, because this is your school, like this is your community, and we really want to hear from that. And those things alone, I think we've been really supportive of those, of all of those things that kind of make you feel like, yes, I like this stuff, because learning happens easier when you really like to be there and you're looking forward to stuff and you feel connected. And community and relationships is, is everything in my perspective. Yes, over right now.
Board Member Brown, did you say they were doing a Democracy Badge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. So that's the point of Democracy, right? Is that you guys get to have your voice to tell your representatives what you want, right? So nice work showing up and telling us exactly what you like, and you could also tell us what you don't like. But the more young people that get involved, I mean, the less old people are stuck around making decisions for you, and the more young people are making decisions that matter. So nice work.
Yeah, thanks. All right. Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to, that was really well said, what you guys shared. The document that your school board just approved 15 minutes ago, aside from focusing on the three purposes of education and important skill sets like literacy and math, says at the bottom, "In a district-wide culture infused with and built upon two shared aspirations. The first is purposefulness, cultivated via engaging, relevant, and fulfilling work, rigorous and challenging studies, competitive exercises, and clear and high expectations." The hard part, but that students understand that what they're doing matters. The second one is joy. And I just want to really stress that this isn't like, oh, so it's about joy, not about math, reading, and writing. The way you learn math, reading, and writing, and everything else is in an environment filled with joy. And so what your school board just approved says, "Cultivated joy cultivated deliberately and routinely and grounded with love and care in celebration, music, laughter, dance, play, and a variety of community-building practices." And those are things that, as Talia points out, that we tend to get less and less of as we get older and older. And I've seen high school students in the right atmosphere live that stuff as well as second graders. But I just want to stress, because I know there's folks out there like, don't talk to me about those things. It's reading, math, writing, skills, college, so forth. All those things take place when you get those other things right. And there's a lot of that already happening, but when we make it core to our mission and you guys voted into policy and we hold ourselves accountable for it, and our student survey data appropriately asked of early elementary all the way through high school students either reinforces that we're doing it or we're not, will be pretty helpful.
Yes, thank you. Any other public comments this evening before I turn it? Yes, come on.
I love the idea of the checking in, how they're planned, are they happy with the plan? I did just have one question. So you mentioned that it would be a prerequisite for graduation possibly, that you'd like to see that. But is there something to check from, from the beginning of high school to the end of high school? Is there a way to check a temperature every year? Is your plan still the same? Did your plan change? Do you still have a plan? Because I know even just.
Test, test.
My ninth grader, I want to know what her plan is. I want to know, does she have a plan? Is she working on a plan? Rather than waiting till 12th grade to sort of, oh, I'm going to have to think of a plan, because then we make decisions quick and we make decisions rashly. But is there a way to take a temperature early on and say, okay, this is what your plan today is at 14, what do you need to do to get to that plan by the time you're 18? How can we help you with that? And even if your plan changes, it's okay, but what, what can we, you know, why did it change? What can we do to help you? I had a ninth grader that knew what she wanted to do. She thought at 12th grade, I have to be locked into that because I said that at ninth grade. Her plan changed right after she graduated. That's okay. But we need to know that there's lots of opportunities. How can we educate them on the many opportunities in there so that they're not locking in on that one plan? So how can we take that temperature throughout the four years? Thank you.
Yeah, just, I agree 1,000%. So essentially, at the high school level, that's good counseling programs, and counselors have a certain caseload, so sometimes the ninth graders don't get as much of it as the juniors and seniors do as they're getting closer to graduating. But, well, we can make sure that we're doing a good job of that. It would be a lot to report. I would say that in terms of just like how we hold ourselves accountable, that everybody graduates with a plan that they feel good about, they have a plan and they feel good about it and their parents do. Tracking everybody through ninth through 12th, just in reporting out, would be tricky, but that is a counseling function, you know? What are you thinking you might want to do? Some ninth graders are ready to talk about it. Sometimes it takes till 10th or 11th grade. I wasn't ready till I was about 24 to figure out what I want to do with my life, and everybody kind of moves at their own pace, but it might have been because I didn't have the counseling that would have helped me earlier on. But I, I think what you said was very well said.
They just get the opportunity to talk about it. As you said, some will be ready, some, to have that opportunity early on to know what the options are. I mean, I knew a field that I wanted to go in at ninth grade, but I didn't know how wide that field was, and so I locked myself into one little part of it, whereas there's so many diverse types in just health field.
Thank you. Before, oh, yeah, go ahead, absolutely.
Sorry. There's also an application that's implemented in the high school called Zello to help you find your path and things like that, that are implemented in your advisory and flex, which is meant to help you like based on your personality traits and your characteristics and the things, how you best learn and things like that, on which field would be beneficial to you and more likely to be what you want, which is like more, it's more individual responsibility kind of thing, that you actually have to be the student to fill it out. There are plenty of students who don't choose to fill it out, but everyone is given that opportunity to do it, it's just if they're willing to take that time to put it into their education.
And just from the, so I'm an educator, not, I don't teach in Summersworth, but I have talked with our Summersworth educators, and one thing I've noticed about the field of education is that it's changed, I mean, your concern is very valid, right? Like, we want kids to have awareness of choices and be able to explore different things and not feel so locked in. Like, my sister got locked in, right? And then she ended up not doing the thing that she wanted to do, and a whole long story, but what I know about Summersworth educators, like, I've, I've just see a team of people so dedicated to the students and student-directed learning in a lot of cases, and fulfilling their academic goals, but at the same time creating a community of support around them with things like, what is it, Zelo? Yeah, and just relationships with their students. I, even being outside of Summersworth as a teacher, I know education has changed from this assembly line to being connected with relationships with, with young people, and like, who are you and what do you really want? And you don't necessarily have to go straight to college, or maybe if your family wants you to, like, how can we like work with your needs and your family's needs? And with the school being more things to more people instead of just academics to people, I think, I think there are more opportunities for that. So I totally understand your concern, and, and I just, I see such a tremendous group of educators in Summersworth working really hard to build relationships, and those relationships will naturally result in kids feeling like they have support and resiliency, because we know that even with one strong relationship with adults, kids build resiliency, young people build resiliency and are able to make those choices. And then like being part of family teams, right? And like connecting with families, because the family concerns are really important. So I don't know, I have a lot of hope that, that we'll have more students ending up doing things that really drive them and fulfill them than getting locked into things that they don't want to do. So, anyway.
Before you leave, would you like to come up and take a picture? Come up here and we'll take a photo? Okay? All right. Wonderful. Let's.
Want to come up here?
Where should we go in front?
Wherever you guys want to go.
Please, please, go forward.
Who's the troop leader?
I'm one of them, and I have two co-leaders.
You're in our troop, too. You're in our troop.
Are we going up?
You guys need to be on the representative.
We're members.
You know, I can go, too, if you, are we good?
Can we take a picture?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You get us all in?
Yes, I can. All right. I avoid the big podium here. Are you ready? I have a double button.
What did we say?
Democracy.
Democracy.
Yeah. Yeah. That tracks.
All right. I checked several.
Nice.
We're preparing the girls' lesson, aren't we? And how we want to run.
Let's finish off the meeting.
We just need like two.
Nice work.
I have more than one.
That's not the final.
Is this the, is this the only copy out here? Oh, it's not the final final? Oh, it's something different. Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. It's time for a board member comment for, to round out the evening. Yeah. Board Member Brown. Yes.
I thank the student representative for mentioning the upload speeds, and I thank Superintendent Shea for saying he's going to follow up on it. I'm sorry to hear about the unhappiness with using the dome. I personally was excited about having a graduation on our own soil and not having to go to Durham, but I understand the disappointment that, oh, my sister graduated at UNH. Why can't we have our Summersworth at UNH? But we're also trying to support our, our local infrastructure. I hear the concern about incentives in the high school, and I'm sorry, with the cell phone policy, that was a state mandated policy. We had, we had to comply with that state statute, and I realize that phone use was one of the incentives, so I don't know how to replace that, but I, I hear that we need to, you know, look at some other creative ideas to replace that incentive, because I don't want the kids to just feel like there's no goal once they, you know, are trying to achieve something. And the other thing, I realized, our city council report, it mentioned the Maple Street and sidewalk was getting fixed. I come down Maple Street that doesn't have the sidewalks, and I'm seeing the kids walking, and that's a major thoroughfare. So at some point, it would be nice to think about having a safer path for the kids to walk rather than like they're walking on a balance beam, trying to stay off of the road, that people go 30, 35 miles an hour down that road. But I just, it's an observation, you know, it costs money, and I thank you for all of that, you know, the city council does. And again, thank you for the $4,000 check for the arts. Thank you for supporting the arts. Thank you for the airtime.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone here, like our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, our school business administrator, like you guys. We are in unprecedented time, and we have a lot of things going wrong, I would say, but we have a lot of things going right, too, and we have a lot of things we can fix, but I think that we are in good, good steering and good hands, and we're going to be okay if we stick together and help each other out, but I'm very thankful for this leadership here. That's it. Thank you.
Board Member Clark, you reminded me of the Vikings and the Finns. Okay? So every Viking ship had a fin on board, apparently, because the Finns were well-known for navigation and could help them reach the shore. And so with all of these unprecedented storms that we're facing, it's nice to have all you Finns on board with me, guiding us through, so I appreciate very much. Because it's not, it's, it's more, the bad things that are going wrong is the weather around us, and I'm so glad to be weathering the storm with everyone. And yay for democracy!
Counselor or student representative? No? Who?
I'm really sorry. What am I supposed to say?
Oh, you can say whatever you'd like for democracy. You can actually, yup. Yay! Yeah. No, great. Thank you to Summersworth Festival Association, getting that check. It means so much on so many levels to get the money and just to have the support for the arts is priceless. Truly, really is a priceless donation, and we will do our absolute best to get the, what the students need, crave, and ask for. To the Girl Scout troop, thank you so much for coming. I hope you're hour-plus. You wonderful, you're welcome anytime. Okay. You can have the, absolutely, you have a floor? You have something to say?
I forgot to say that NHS is doing their Krispy Kreme donut sale, and you guys should definitely buy from me, and I would really appreciate it.
Yeah. We'll just make sure the USDA is in here.
It's not during school hours.
Not during school hours, yeah, for the sugary things. Uh, I don't know. Thank you so much. I'm excited about what's going forward. I think, again, it's power of relationships, power of doing this, power of speaking up, because all of these things really truly matter, and I think we're, I think Summersworth